Okay. (laughter) Probably that means that I called you to order.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, it is that time. And 7:30 on Tuesday, February 23rd, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the City Commission, and we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. If you could all stand. My pledge, I believe, is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first thing we have to do is approval of the agenda, but before we get a motion to do that, I would like to delete items three and four. This is in regards to the ordinance we were adjusting for the Board of Ethics in the City of Huntington Woods, and we've asked that our city attorney add some language to that, further language to just, we were adding some alternate members, and we would like to detail that a little more so that we have terms set up for a one-year, two-year, three-year term to start off, and then what somehow define how and which alternate member would serve in the case where an existing member had to recuse themselves. So, we're gonna have that brought back at the next meeting, and because of that, item number four was appointments to the Ethics Committee, so we're gonna delay that for another month. I'll just put another announcement out there that we are looking for people to apply not only to the Ethics Board as an alternate position, but we also have an opening on the BART Board, the Environmental Advisory Commission, the Budget Advisory Commission, and the Construction and Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. So, if anyone out there is interested in serving the city on a Board or Commission, please stop in a City Hall or go online and fill out an application. We would appreciate it. So, having said that, and we get a motion to approve the agenda as I mentioned.
Mr. Mayor.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Motion to, we have two sets of minutes, a special meeting of January 19th, as well as the regular City Commission meeting of January 19th.
I'll move to approve minutes from both meetings, January 19th, special meeting and the regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any communications. I'll send this file by. Is that correct?
We do not have any communications.
County Commissioners in remarks. I see. Calling exactly the audience.
Good evening, everybody. I do wanna let you know that Oakland County is prepared for the Zika virus. You know, I got an announcement that they're, you know, doing good public health should we have cases around here. We are ready. This is, we are going to be celebrating 50-year anniversary of our Oakland County Parks and Recreation Department, and there should be some special events coming up throughout the year celebrating that. I do wanna remind our residents that if they are lower income, such as seniors or others, there are taxpayer assistance meetings to help people pay taxes, and you need to call the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, you know, Andy Meisner, at 858-0611. They've met with, I think about a thousand different residents so far, making adjustments so that people can be put on payment plans. We don't want anyone to lose their home. I do also wanna remind our residents, again, low income, that through our Oakland County Community Home and Improvement Department, they do have no interest loans for people that are income-eligible to do up to $20,000 of repairs, safety roofs, furnaces, so forth. And I have had residents that have been referred to me recently and that have gone to this program. When I say no interest loan, you get the money and it becomes a lien on your house. So, if you die or at some future date, you sell your home, that's when that payment is due back, but it doesn't increase any mortgage or any payments, truly no, no interest. That's it. Oh, that's it for tonight. Any questions for me?
All right, question.
As long as you brought up the Zika virus, I spoke to our city manager earlier. You say that county is prepared. I'm not quite sure what that means.
Reaction, just, you know, education, they're starting, when we had the West Nile, you know, they were starting a whole program. You know, West Nile is to educate people what to do, what to see. I honestly do not, I haven't had a briefing on it, I just got the press release.
Well, I wanna ask the question because it concerns residents in Huntington Woods who have swimming pools and fish ponds and other pool water, and these are whatever you wanna call them, places where water pools, for example, there, I know a house on our street where the resident is not living there, and there's a pool, and it's not a sealed-top pool, it's open and there's a tarp, and of course, there's a whole slew of water and sludge at the bottom of it that generally has been there, and we have, over the years, obtained those pellets to throw them in there to prevent the breeding of mosquitoes, but I think because of the grave public health risk posed by this virus, and I think because of the number, just being Huntington Woods, the number of young families, young women, young women who are pregnant and so forth, I think around here, this bears some particular worth studying, and so even though it's February, nobody's too worried about water pooling, we're
I will bring more information.
Thirty days away from where that could start to happen.
We are obviously, when you, you're talking about being proactive about West Nile virus and that, you get that from mosquitoes, and obviously
This is a little bit more
It is more serious, but again, it's still, everything we've been doing, and we still have the county initiative where all of the communities, and I know Huntington Woods applies and gets reimbursement for some of the treatment that we do here.
Will you bring up this issue of pools?
And we do, yes.
And, you know.
So, but it's the same response to the West Nile that way, and we are funding, we are treating, I know we do this sewers and proactive, whether there will be additional things to do, I will definitely look into that, and I do know that we have emergency funding for things like this for public health.
Well, for pellets and things like that to make it, you know, there'd be no reason for someone not to, I'm not sure what we can do by way of ordinance or proclamation or whatever else to like mandate it, I don't know that, but it is a serious public health crisis, and it is worth, you know, people get all ginned up about seeing a rat, I mean, this is
I will absolutely get more details and convey it back to our city manager, what's available through the county, and whether there will be additional initiatives beyond the West Nile. I will let her know. Okay, I think it's a very good point.
Any other questions?
See, Claire is, Claire is itching too.
Not, not exactly.
Inching no pun intended to address the
Yeah. Kind of weird to come in at this point, but there is a session set up by the county for fairly early in March that has been an annual event for West Nile virus. We've already been notified that they will also be looking at the Zika virus at that meeting and talking about any thing that the city should be doing. So, after that, I will share what information I get with Amy and with the city manager and with you all. One thing that people should remember, and this does not address empty pools or pools that are being neglected, but mosquitoes need calm to breed, and every time that water's been moved, it starts to cycle all over again. So, for example, our fountain area, there's enough movement, we've had experts come in. So, that's one very important thing to remember, it does not address, as you talked about, the pools that are just lying foul, so, but I will bring that information to you.
Excellent. This is the first opportunity for public participation, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. If the public has anything that is not an agenda item and would like to speak, please go forward, announce yourself and your address. None will close public participation and move on to the first, first item, which is a proclamation. Proclamations are always fun to do, and this was one that I actually had the honor of proclaiming on January 23rd last month, on the occasion of the 40th anniversary of the Huntington Woods Men's Club celebration. They had a dinner and reception that celebrated the event, and I would like to read the proclamation into the official record of the City of Huntington Woods tonight. And as I said that night, when I read it for the first time, I did not write this, although I had a little bit of input as to some of the facts in here, I had, Tony Lehman had the great honor of writing the proclamation, and as Tony goes, you know, sometimes it gets a little long, but in any case, I'm gonna read it. Whereas the City of Huntington Woods, a small city in southeast Oakland County, born as a village in 1927, eventually becoming an incorporated city in 1932, has been known for its beautiful tree-lined streets, its beautiful architecture, and its citizens, who above all, believed in hard work, involvement, and the support of their local government. And whereas Huntington Woods has a reputation among its sister cities as being able to meet its challenges throughout the decades, urging its residents to join organizations and clubs in an effort to bring their unfettered work ethic to fruition by way of combining their talents of many for the good of the entire community. And whereas, in meeting these challenges, a small group of residents, the founding members of the Huntington Woods Men's Club, determined to charter a new organization that would, over time, be recognized as one of the most philanthropic clubs in the region, an organization that would be comprised of those persons in the community whom the city fathers highly respected, illustrating time and time again that their dedication to the advancement of the city has become an engine of enthusiasm. And whereas, this enthusiastic organization has, over the last 40 years, shown in words and deeds that hard work results in substantial accomplishments, as illustrated by the contribution of well over $2 million raised by the Men's Club, money that have been used by our city to fund hundreds of projects, including building additions, recycling bins, tree trimming, public safety improvements, library windows and kitchen renovation, transportation initiatives, street lighting and signs, city calendars, park projects, the annual fireworks display at Rackham Golf Course, as well as numerous programs to help the youth, seniors, and other adults. And whereas, in addition to the Men's Club, in addition, the Men's Club understands how important the life of our residents are to the fabric of our city, having worked on youth programs, assisting with education at Burton School, and the development of the scholarship program that has assisted many of our young adults to reach for academic achievement. And whereas, at the end of the day, residents can rest assured that while watching the annual fireworks display echo across our fair city, that the work by the men and women of the Men's Club is done out of adoration for our community and given as a gift to those residents who desire to have Huntington Woods remain the single most desirable and respected community in Oakland County for future generations. Now therefore be a proclaim that the residents of Huntington Woods, its city commissioners and administrators congratulate, commend, and admire the Men's Club of Huntington Woods for its unending efforts for the city on this, the 40th anniversary of the club, and hope and pray with open hearts that the Men's Club continues to be an example of what can be accomplished through love and friendship. Proclaim this day.
All right.
So, I see we have the current president of the Men's Club here, Rob Curley. I think I'm gonna turn your proclamation. We also have several members of the executive board and I believe seven past presidents in the room, so thanks for all your hard work.
And I just wanted to be very brief, but if I could, if I could ask everyone to come on up, because, you know, this is a celebration of us, not just one current board, so. Thank you, Bob, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much. To be brief, there's a lot to be said, but in a short period of time, I would just say this, and Tony, come on up. Tony, come on.
That's very nice of you, thank you.
I understand. Thank you, Jules, and Jules, you should get up here too.
I can take the picture. I'm not, I'm doing my job here.
Very briefly, this is a celebration of 40 years of hard work and another 40 years that's to come. We have a terrific, amazing past presence that at our recent 40th anniversary party, I believe we counted 21 past pres, 20, and a current president that showed up, and it was a terrific event. We have a great board. What we do, again, at the end of the day, is a social club, but it's also, we're 100% dedicated to this community, and I think that's one of the many things that make Huntington Woods a great community. Of course, this is an opportunity to pitch the auction. Buy your tickets. I hope people are watching on cable TV. Buy your tickets, they will definitely sell. 850 tickets, and when they're gone, they're gone. We have an amazing auction this year, we have an amazing project as well, renovation of Lincoln, I'm sorry, Scotia Park. There are displays outside for what it is, and I don't think it's, there's a better project to get behind than this, so, again, on behalf of myself, the current president, thank you, the past presidents, the current board members that have shown up here tonight, thank you all for showing up, thank you for this proclamation, Bob, and again, another 40 years, and we're looking forward to it, so.
Rob.
Thanks again.
What's your date of the auction?
Thank you, Jeff, and you can come down here, 'cause you're a member too. And if I could also say this on the record, Joe, you're invited to a meeting one of these days. I'm just saying, March 19th is the auction, at the Rec Center as always, so please get your tickets, and thank you everyone for showing up tonight.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Rob.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'll be joining at the Men's Club auction because I heard it's half price, so I would be joining then.
You heard wrong.
All right, moving on to the items of business. Number one, the city planners have been working with the planning commission to revise the fence ordinance. Can you, yeah?
Yes.
Start us off.
After reviewing this with the planning commission, they are recommending a new section be added to the current fence ordinance that deals specifically with the zoo, when they can put up screening and when they can't put up screening, and then what material that screening and what material the fencing needs to be made out of. So, that is in the ordinance. Yesterday, it came to my attention that because the fence ordinance is not in the zoning ordinance, we need to add it a section that if the zoo needed to file an appeal, they have a fence taller than what's allowed in the ordinance, that they need to go to zoning board appeals. We did add Section 3.48, which makes this fence, this new ordinance section applicable to the zoning board appeals for appeal.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the subrue?
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the audience?
Because they say a picture is worth a thousand words, I brought some pictures. Can I share?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Even though we all know you, when you get back to the mic, please.
Hi. I'm okay. Right? That's okay. I'm Linda Solomon, I live at 8246 Huntington, and I wanna thank you for the opportunity to state my extreme disappointment over the proposed ordinance, and also to restate my position that tarps along Huntington Woods, along Huntington Road are unsightly, unnecessary, and unwanted. This ordinance allows for continued tarping at current service areas, animal habitats, concession stands, and utility areas. 15 feet from the perimeter fence is not enough, it's not far back enough, just because, and you can see, the third row down, that tarp is within, is 15 feet from the perimeter fence, it's inside the fence, and then if you step back on the sidewalk across the street, it looks as though it's the perimeter fence, it's, that's 15 feet within, that, that does not make a difference. So, anyway, just because the zoo says it needs a tarp does not mean that is the case. There are examples here on the bottom of what the tarp is shielding, there's surplus storage items, and examples where there's nothing hidden at all, but still the tarp is there. Yeah, there are a lot more creative ways to disguise these areas than blanket tarping. It might be the easiest and the cheapest, but it should not be acceptable. For years Huntington Woods and the zoo have coexisted, but times have changed, and we should not be afraid to take a stand or approach the zoo when their actions have a negative impact. Many, many residents agree with me about eliminating the tarp. Let's make Huntington Road more attractive for neighbors, for walkers, for runners, and for the future, and please do not approve this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other?
David Sloan, 8050 Lincoln, Huntington Woods. The issue of giving the City of Detroit Zoo its own fence ordinance has been advocated, initiated, and initiated by city staff and not by residents. Is anyone from the zoo here tonight? I have spoken repeatedly to the planning commission and to this commission against forfeiting the city's rights and controls in favor of the City of Detroit Zoo. This is an unnecessary private bill. It amounts to a gift to the City of Detroit Zoo for which Huntington Woods receives nothing in return. In fact, we are even paying for the creation of this ordinance through our outside planning company. If you allow this ordinance to pass, then you are giving up the rights of the residents of this city. There are numerous zoo issues, from the drapes at Wareham and other areas, to the artificial noise, to the unsightliness at Ludlow and Huntington. Since the Detroit Zoo is located two-thirds in the City of Huntington Woods, our city needs to have a seat on the zoo society board, which the zoo has repeatedly said, no. The City of Huntington Woods should be protecting the interests of the residents first by using the ordinances currently on the books and not by rewriting new ones for the benefit of the City of Detroit Zoo. I urge this commission to turn down the request for this private bill.
Any other comments? Okay, back up to the City Commission, this
Well, I, in response to Ms. Salmons' question, based on the photographs that she's giving to us, do we know, can we, can we identify what's behind the, that perimeter, what looks like, what looks like it's on the outside fence, but it's obviously inside, that's the second picture at the top?
That is the camels, the animal habitat, where the zoo has claimed that the tarp protects the mating habits of certain species. The camels have been there over 50 years, and I don't think that they're referring to the camels. I think they're referring to some kind of bird that is more recently there. Well, my answer to that is, maybe you didn't put the birds in the right place, maybe they need to be in a more protected area, because that's why they're saying they need the tarp.
Let me, let me play devil's advocate here with you for a second. It is the zoo, okay? Who are we to tell them, well, you have to put the bird sanction, whatever it is, I'm not an expert on that topic, but one of the things that we've talked about in relation to this ordinance, and I could not disagree more, that this is, this ordinance is in direct response to the residents' complaints about the tarping last summer. That's the reason for the ordinance, is only because of resident issues and nothing else that this ordinance comes to be. But I'm just, I'm, this is always an issue of balance, and, you know, we can pass ordinances or not pass ordinances, but the question becomes, at what point do we, can we tell the zoo, you have to run the zoo in the way we say versus what we are trying to achieve here, which is basically a threat, we don't like the tarp, and I could not agree with you more, there's no, I don't, I can virtually assure you on this commission, there's no disagreement about that tarp, but the question is, where they have an interest, and they believe that it's either animals or construction or something that they wanna shield, under what circumstances do we have the right to tell them, you can't do that?
Well, it could be a blight ordinance, because I have more, say, let's say I lived on a regular street where I had neighbors across the street from me, I would have more control or more input on what was on their front lawn, let's say they parked a car on their front lawn, I could call the city
Well, there's an ordinance.
Right, there's an ordinance. So, blight, if I were to leave my garbage cans out after 5:00 PM or whatever So blight, if I were to leave my garbage cans out after 5:00 PM or whatever the time is, I would get a ticket.
I'm glad to hear you say that, by the way.
And I've gotten a ticket. So I do feel that within a certain amount of space, we should have say over what's acceptable. They're really treating the perimeter, the Huntington Road perimeter, as though it's an area behind their garage, just like you might put your used swing set equipment or something back there. You know, it's kind of like an area that nobody sees. But guess what? We see it. And by having this tarp, it gives them a very easy way out. Like you see what they have back there. They could put that somewhere else. Why don't they put that in their parking lot?
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying that, that, you know, if it truly is a matter that involves, you know, an- animal welfare, we talked, we had a lot of discussion about this and the American Zoologic Society and all this other stuff. You know, you've had a lot of, and again, this comes down to balance. You know, it's easy to say do this or do that. And then at some point the zoo can come in and say, you know, I mean, right, you know, we have a right to the animals or whatever. All I'm looking for is to avoid, I'd like to avoid litigation if possible with the zoo over something like that. And, but I just, do you, my question is, do you know what's behind there?
Behind?
In this, in this.
Well, they're all different. I went all, I walked all along Huntington, I went in.
This, this, the second, the.
The first.
For example, behind here, this, this would be the,
The third one, okay.
The third row down to the left.
Okay, so this is right at like Huntington. This is in the area where the camels are. They might have, the, the tarp goes further than where the camels are. And that's part of my point here is that they have a blanket tarp. And in some places, it's, there's nothing behind it. It was just, it's easy for them. They put it up. We kind of quieted down when they took down most of it and they think that we're done, but yeah.
No, they know, they know we're not done, believe me. This is, we made this clear to them last year that this is, that it's infuriating to the people who live along there. I, I agree with, like I said, I don't think anybody here disagrees. I'm just.
Well, you know, like for instance, right across from me, they just installed this year a huge wooden fence and an electric gate that dings when it opens and closes, so I know it's working.
For?
For what they say is security. Did they get a permit? No. Did the city follow up and ticket them for not getting a permit? I don't know. I mean, at the last meeting I was at, I, that's when I was made aware that the city didn't know. I mean, I talk to them every day. I knew what was going on, but I didn't think it was my position to like follow up and see whether or not there were the proper permits and all that. But they're not taking us into consideration. And that's why fifteen feet from the perimeter fence, it's not, it's not enough.
Like I said, I personally understand where it come from. I personally agree, except that as I keep saying, this is a matter of.
But I'm not saying that they can't have fencing. They can do all sorts. They can be creative. Look, they have dinosaurs at the zoo. They should be able to figure something out that is attractive and natural.
Fake dinosaur, fake dinosaurs.
Well, I'm saying they're creative, so, you know, they don't need to use a tarp. Let them do something else. We're not saying no fencing. We're just saying no green plastic tarp.
Amy, do you know, you know, the picture she's brought in, she's right. I think picture tells a lot of words. Do you know what this is?
The, I take it the one on the bottom to the far left, that's where the concession stand is?
Well, it's behind something. It's, it's, you know, they're technically, I'm sure in the summer, they take this stuff out and put it, you know, into the park more. And then this is right next to it. So this is, this is kind of across from, well, it's, it's between Ludlow and Salem, right smack in the middle. The, the Urbstins, it's like by them. And I know that she kind of likes the tarp because she has said that people take smoking breaks. Well, I think the zoo is a non-smoking place. I don't think people are smoking there anymore.
And one of the areas where there's still tarp is behind the concession stand. It's my understanding that they're going to be putting up a stockade fence and taking down the, the tarp. It just hasn't been done yet. And, and any places where there is currently type tarp, I know there is one for the animal habitat that she was talking about. There is, it's heavily screened with landscaping, which is something new to obscure the, the tarp that's there. And then the third place where it is allowed would be if they were going to be doing construction, but they're not doing any construction in Huntington, sorry, no.
Well, I really do appreciate the beautiful landscaping that they've done. They've done an amazing job. They've spent a lot of money with evergreens and they pack them in very tight. But this new ordinance allows for tarping behind the, the greenery and it shouldn't be necessary.
We had a certain distance, at a certain distance, not on the fence. In other words, not on the perimeter fence. You can't hang anything on the perimeter fence. This, this thing is, the ordinance allows it inside unless it's in a protected area, right?
Well, that wasn't how I wrote it. I, I might, I, maybe I'm.
All right, well, you raised some very good points and the pictures are very helpful and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good question, James.
Yeah, the purpose of this ordinance is to basically deal with these tarps. This is currently without the ordinance. I had sat on planning last year, so it was a discussion item. If you look at the ordinance itself under 2B, operations service areas or indoor animal habitat areas shall be screened either with a landscape screen located along the existing Huntington Road perimeter fence that provides a minimum of eighty percent opacity or a fence of a natural material such as wood or bamboo. And then in the next section under outside animal habitat, outside animal habitat areas may be screened either by a fence of natural material such as wood or bamboo or a tarp screening if said tarp is supplemented with landscape screening along the existing Huntington Road perimeter fence that provides a minimum eighty percent opacity. No tarp shall be located within fifteen feet of that perimeter fence. The idea is, is if they're going to put up a tarp, it is going to be concealed by evergreens or greenery or a wooden fence. And that was what was presented. This is.
Well, the bottom, the.
This here is before there is any ordinance.
This bottom picture on the right has the new landscaping. It also has the fence fifteen feet within the perimeter and the inside perimeter fence has the tarping. So this would be acceptable. It has the greenery. It's within the fifteen, it's outside of the fifteen feet and it has the tarp. And so if you look at this from, this is not even at the sidewalk. I mean, this looks just like this. That you can't tell that it's an indoor, an interior fence or an exterior fence. They look the same.
Mrs. Solomon, at this point in time, they don't have any ordinance that's before them to follow. I'd like us to see, us adopt the ordinance and then see, once we have a period of time, that they can get some greenery growing. Because I have seen some sections where they put in nice greenery and it does hide behind there. But it's a tiny section and I'm not sure if they'll do a large section or just a tiny section. If it still becomes an obnoxious view after they put in their fencing according to this, I mean, at that point, then we have a right to make a complaint. But the planning commission did go through a process to try and get something that we would not have to look at, ugly, obviously ugly tarps.
But that is this right here. This complies. This complies with the new ordinance. And it has very mature evergreens. They, they did a beautiful job. And they didn't just go like in a row. They staggered it, so it's, there's depth to it. But you can still see this tarp and it's ugly.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm just thinking, the cost that, that would be involved, if you're talking about having a tarp and landscaping versus taking that off the table and having wood or bamboo, seems like it would be more economically feasible for the zoo. I mean, you're talking about landscaping and you're going to have maintenance of the landscaping on top of everything else. Personally, I think, I think the tarp's awful. I can respect their need for privacy at certain areas, but I really think that we, again, have to err on the side of our residents who have to look at it every day. I would encourage we go back to the drawing table and take the tarp off of the table completely.
Mr. Mayor? I'm not exactly sold on the tarp either. What I'd like to do is potentially table this item and, and bring some folks into the zoo, you know, in from the zoo. Maybe have a study session, a sit down with them and find out, you know, why exactly this tarping is needed, if it's needed, what alternatives are. I don't have anything in here in my packet from the planning commission and, you know, if, if a representative from the zoo is there or not, I do not know. But I'd like to have a little more discussion to see if we can address some of the residents' concerns about the tarping.
Okay, Amy, do you know when the planning commission was, was studying this, why did they bring tarping back in? Because it's obvious they, they talked about the screening using a fence, you know, bamboo or wood fence. And then at the last, the last line of it, they bring in, if a tarp is used, it has to be fifteen feet away.
Well, there are, are some areas where they were comfortable with the stockade fencing, like around the concession stands, but they weren't comfortable with that type of fencing around animal habitats. I don't know if it's because they wanted it to be removable for when they move the animals or if it was the material, you know, the type of material of the fencing, that they didn't want animals, you know, biting up against it or.
Well, I think that's, I, I, I agree with Joe. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that we have the legal authority to tell the zoo, you can't use tarps. I mean, it sounds nice to say and we're going to err on the side of the residents. Just remember the zoo's in Huntington Woods. It is a resident in that sense. It is in Huntington Woods. And we have to, there's a balance here. So I, I would support, if that was a motion to table, I would support that pending some contact with the zoo, whether it's a, a study session or whether, I mean, there's got to be an answer to this. Like I said, I don't know that we have the legal authority to tell them, you can't use tarping. I, I suspect we would not fare very well in a, in a legal challenge to that. I think we have a right to reasonably regulate it so that it does, well, this, like I said, this is an aesthetics issue and I, and I agree. Trouble with aesthetics is it's subjective. And, and also the zoo has a right to come in and say, well, just a minute here, we, we have this, this, that, you know, we're running a business, we have funding, you know. It's like you say, well, in your backyard, well, I want this kind of fence and I yell over, I don't like that. Take that out of there. And you're like, a metal finger would go up over the fence. And I'm just afraid that a legal challenge to us here would not be good for us, would not be good financially and would not be good in terms of solving the problem. So I, I would favor tabling it, talking to them and just, you know, we, we made it. Is it Van Acker? Is that his name, Jerry Van Acker? When he was here that time, I, I mean, I said to him here, you see which way this is going? I mean, and I, I fully, everybody agrees. There's no disagreement. The, the question is, where does the balance come in? And I, I also have a hard time believing there is not a more aesthetic way of achieving the privacy screening without plastic tarping. Gather, you would think in today's world, there's all kinds of materials and things that could be used that would not be as, I don't know if the right word would be stark or as, you know, assaultive, if you will, to the senses as this tarp. So let's, I would move it to table.
I think some explanation as to what their concerns are or why they feel they need a target. If that is the case, then they need, and where their intention is to use it will help us all understand the whole issue.
Could we add, inviting the planning commission, which tried to deal with this?
Well, let's, let's leave it to the, let's leave it to the city manager to, to make some contact with the zoo and get some answers. And then we'll, whether it's best to go back to planning at that point or bring it back to us.
And I think it's reasonable to convey to them that this is not going away. That people are very concerned about it and rightfully so. Like I said, I, I can, you know, as, as my wife said at the time last summer when we walked along there, she said, if you lived here, you'd be the first one. And she's right. So I agree with, with Allison, but I just got to watch how far you intrude here. Because if you lost the challenge, then you lose the ability to regulate it and I don't want to do that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table. Did you want to say something else?
After, I have a question.
You can't discuss it after.
Okay, I have a question. Can we also, can the city manager find out why there was not a permit pulled on that fence?
That I can answer. They just had never, ever been requested to pull a permit before. And it was a, a service fence that went in, so it would have been part of their operations. Just had never, we just never crossed that bridge.
Could I ask the maker of that motion to add that they'd be tabled to a date at, at time that the city manager has the information that we're requesting?
That's mine. I'll amend my motion to that. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a purchase agreement. Matter of consideration of approval of purchase agreement and land contract for the sale of the property at 10099 West Eleven Mile Road, formerly known as Sam's Market. Amy?
Yes, this is, what, what we have before you is both the purchase agreement, which would need to be executed first, followed the land contract, assuming that the purchase agreement is filed through on. So what I'd like to do is have you approve both documents tonight so that we can expedite this rather than the purchase agreement one night and a land contract the next night. Liz is here. If you have any questions about the, the use or, or you want to. Well, whole service TV salon being proposed to go in and part of it. Second half is a business yet to be determined, although it will be something that provides with our own ordinance. Yeah, the building will go through a site plan process in front of the planning commission as soon as we can get it scheduled.
Yep.
Any, any comments from the public?
Panzino, 8634 Huntington. I'm a little bit confused here because the incumbents on this commission refused a land contract previously. And now we have the same land contract coming up with the same liabilities that the incumbents discussed. So what's different this time and why?
We, we have never been opposed to a land contract. Every offer we received on this property included a land contract, so.
No, I believe if you look at the minutes, that, I'm not going to debate matters of fact, but I will send a memo to the city on what was said about being opposed to land contracts. So now we want to accept a land contract? I don't understand the distinction.
Any other comments? Okay, move back to the city commission. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll predicate it by saying after five years plus wrangling with Sam's on Eleven Mile and all the effort that went into procurement of it, trying to stop it from lighting out a large part of Eleven Mile Road, having held on to it the way we have and.
part of 11 Mile Road, uh, having held on to it the way we have, and, uh, commending our city manager for the work that was done on the land contract and on the purchase agreement and with our new purchasers, I would move that we, uh, accept and approve the purchase agreement as presented, and I would move, uh, that we accept and approve the land contract as presented.
Question?
Has been, as I understand it, has been, uh, intensely worked on by council for the city, um, council for the buyers, and, uh, I fully support this and move we approve it.
Okay, any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to wish, uh, the purchaser and the audience the best of luck with their new business, and, uh...
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and we're looking forward to having you up and running.
Thank you so much.
Did you bring the check? Did you bring the...
We're, we're excited about the improvements you're gonna make to the property, and the great addition it's gonna be to our communities.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
You got, congratulations.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Four, and then skip, so, so we're moving on to item number five. Amy, are you taking this? Tri-party road program.
Oh, this is, um, an annual allocation, uh, you get, uh, tri-party funding from the road commission, open college, and the city puts in a third of the funding. Uh, the only place you can use it on is a road within the road commission jurisdiction, which would be the 10 Mile Drive, Service Drive. So we always allocate this money for crack sealing, which we, uh, generally get together with neighboring communities to bring the cost out, so we would suggest that you would continue to allocate the tri-party funding in, in that manner.
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, yes?
I'll move that the City of Huntington Woods enter into an agreement to participate in the 2016 tri-party program and accept an allocation of, uh, eleven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars to be placed into an escrow fund for road improvement projects along 10 Mile Road, and be a further resolved that the city contract with neighboring communities for crack sealing maintenance on the 10 Mile Service Drive during the 2016 construction season.
One second.
Any comment from the public? Any other comments from the city commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to a contract extension for sewer cleaning.
Yes, uh, as you recall, year last July, we went out for bids and contracted with, um, Allstate Power Bag to do sewer cleaning and televising of our lines. They have, uh, not quite completed phase one yet. They're almost done. They clean north of Lincoln and west of, uh, Wyoming, and, uh, we would like to extend the bid to fa- what we call phase two, which is the remainder of the city, south of Lincoln and then, uh, east of Wi- uh, east of Wyoming. Uh, at the same price, uh, they anticipate being done in the middle of this summer, and at that point, then, they will prepare for us a report with the condition of the, uh, of the sewer lines, what areas need to be addressed, what the cost associated that, with that would be, uh, so that we can move forward with, uh, an infrastructure capital improvement program, uh, for our sewer lines.
Any comments from the public?
I just have a question. Um, do we... Linda Solomon, eight-two-four-six Huntington. So do we have any kind of, uh, idea? The condition that the sewers are in? Have they told us they're good, not good?
They are videotaping them, and our engineers are in the process of reviewing the videotapes right now, so we do not have, uh, any report at this point.
Thank you.
When do we expect a motion?
A preliminary report by the end of March, final reports in time after, uh, they're done with the phase two, end of summer.
When they're in the process of doing this, if they were to see something that they thought required immediate, I assume they would bring it, you know, if they, this is a disaster waiting to happen or something?
Yes.
Our city engineers are actually undergoing the review, the laque de France, the review of the tapes. That was that, they're part of the program.
Mr. Mayor, and the timing of the report, uh, too, is, is important, at least the preliminary report, as we begin to start budgeting for, you know, the upcoming, uh, budget cycle. You know, we, we really need to get an idea of what we're looking at, um, somewhat cost-wise, before we start exploring, you know, other, uh, avenues and, and other items. So I'm glad to hear that we'll have a preliminary report in March. It makes me kinda feel, uh, a little bit better as sort of April begins our budgeting process, so...
Do we have a motion to, uh, extend the contract?
Sure. I'll make the motion that we enter into the second year of the contract by appropriating a sum equal to three hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars in the water and sewer fund, number five ninety-two, for a budget period beginning July first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, opposed? Motion carries. Another contract extension for road construction.
Yes, there is a little bit of money left over from the road project that we undertook last year. About two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, it's not enough to do the entire city block, uh, but we, because we have funded for this money and we are levying a millage for it, we think that it's appropriate to spend it and do road improvement. So we have identified the cul-de-sac on Roy Court as being in the worst possible condition that a, a road could be in. Uh, and for two hundred, estimated two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, we would be able to, uh, finish that, the cul-de-sac at Roy Court. So it is, um, our recommendation that we extend the contract with the bidder that we had last year, um, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, with the two hundred and thirty-five thousand coming out of the, uh, road bond, and the balance will, uh, come out of general fund or major or local road funds.
And that would include water main replacement?
Yes.
Any comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
I move to finally relieve the long-suffering residents of the cul-de-sac on Roy Court, including our distinguished citizen Mitch Meisner, who I'm sure isn't watching, and we can tell him he can stop calling. Help is on the way. Then we go ahead with this.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'm just curious if there's any possible way we would be able to get a rundown of, of some of the areas that are still needing. I'm just curious, this is another subject, of course, but have we prioritized the list so we know where we're going next? So people might have an idea that they're...
We don't, we don't really have a, a prioritized list because it changes, uh, depending on the condition of, of what's underneath the roads. Not only the road condition, but as we experience issues with water mains in certain areas, the list, if there was a list, would constantly be changing, so it is, uh, there is not currently an, an existing list of what's next.
If, if you, if you stop by, I can show you what, what roads happened on.
Okay.
And there, there are ratings that were done on the roads, that their conditions, but that rating was like four or five years old by now.
It, it's still valid. I mean, if we haven't touched the road, the rating is what the rating is, so we have a rating.
Well, the ratings would be, would be worse.
Sure.
And then we also take into account where we have a proliferation of main, water main breaks.
Okay.
And factor those, those two things together with the amount of money that's available.
Great. I'll, I'll come in. Go over with it.
You may see changes once the sewers start executing.
Right, right.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight is the Scotia Park Service Agreement.
Yes. Are you telling us? Yeah. Uh, this is, uh, an agreement to hire, uh, former resident Jeff Klein, who's a landscape architect, to oversee the renovations, uh, for Scotia Park. Uh, we have a preliminary plan prepared by Mr. Klein out front, and, uh, we are now ready to contract with him to oversee the, uh, spitting specifications, uh, construction, et cetera. Uh, that was outlined in, um, in his agreement. In, I'm sorry, in his proposal. And the estimated cost is come, comes in at eighteen-five, for which we did have money budgeted in the budget this year in the capital improvement fund for this project.
Anything further you'd like to, to add?
I, well, just like to introduce Jeff, if he is so lucky to become the, the project manager. He's, uh, well-respected in the community, and we feel he's certainly headed us in the right direction.
Why don't we see where he knows about tarp?
Uh, we could talk about screening.
You knew, you knew as soon as you were sitting there, you thought maybe you should leave.
I, I don't know, I was thinking maybe there's some work. But I just appreciate the opportunity. I grew up here, was a lifeguard at the pool, have done a lot of projects throughout, uh, the city residential projects, continue to do, uh, a bunch of projects all over, um, in my current residence, uh, in Detroit as well. Do a lot with stormwater management, um, and so, um, I just think it's a really exciting project for me, for the city, and, uh, hope that, hope to be a part of it.
Yeah, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer any questions. Any other public comment?
Kenzino eighty-six thirty-four Huntington, oh.
Kenzino thirty-six, eighty-six thirty-four Huntington. Um, is this a flat fee or an hourly contract? And what percentage of the estimated construction cost at Scotia does the management fee consist of?
It's not, it's not, it's not percentage-based. It is, uh, it is hourly-based, and the estimated cost is the eighteen-five.
Yes, but how much is what he's going to be overseeing going to cost?
This is actually not the construction of the, uh, the reconstruction of the park.
So this is just to get to the point where we have to figure out how much money we're going to spend to reconstruct the park. Is that a fair summary?
No, he's going to, uh, work with us to draw, draw up the specifications, and then oversee the subcontractors that are working, that, that are awarded the bid. Is that correct?
Yes, and I'm happy to elaborate. I just wanna make sure that I'm within my bounds to...
You certainly are, uh, at least in mind you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it's based on an hourly rate. The idea is that, um, uh, that I will see the project through to, uh, completion of construction, so I'll be acting as a landscape architect on the project, specifically noting what the costs of the project are. We're at sort of a schematic phase still, so we have to work into the actual details of the construction. We have done a preliminary sort of budget, uh, on it, which was included in, uh, in the actual document that I prepared, uh, in the first round for the city. And I can tell you that my fees are less than ten percent of what the budget cost is, um, for the project, which I think is, is below the standard of normally around that ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
David Sloan eighty-fifty Lincoln Huntington Woods. Last October, I attended the Stormwater Summit at Lawrence Tech University, my second one, and Jeff gave a great presentation and showed a real interest and knowledge in how to deal with landscapes and how to make sure that the water does not go into the streets and into our storm sewers. And, and he talked about ways that we can retain the water and filtrate into the ground. So I'm, I'm very happy that, uh, he has a contract, and, uh, thank the commission.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, move that the City of Huntington Woods enter into a professional service agreement with Jeff Klein Architecture, thirty-one thirty-eight Rosa Parks Boulevard, Detroit, Michigan, for services as described in the proposal, uh, as of January eighteenth, twenty sixteen, for a total cost of eighteen thousand five hundred. Let the professional service agreement for said services be reviewed by our, uh, city attorney.
One second.
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that, uh, right after I was elected, I had an opportunity to attend one of these sessions regarding Scotia Park at the rec. department. Claire was there, Mary was there, as were, uh, a lot of residents that surrounded the park. Uh, I was very impressed with, uh, Mr. Klein and, uh, really the entire process of how residents were engaged and, you know, what the park would look like, how stormwater, uh, would be managed, uh, you know. A lot of detail, uh, into what, which directions things would face, and there was a lot of resident input, and it was a very, uh, very positive experience, so I'm hoping that that continues as this project moves down the road.
Yeah, um, I reviewed the proposal, and I have represented the city at SEMCAG, and we basically have been dealing with the environment for some time. And Jeff has incorporated virtually all of the current modern techniques for retaining water on the property. Uh, we need to be doing a lot more of approaches to keep the water on our parks, under our parking lots, in such a way that we can reduce the amount of water that goes into the sewer when we have these large floods in short periods of time. So, I mean, I welcome the proposal, and hopefully also, the way the ground is, uh, prepared after this is done, uh, we will not have a clay swamp where if you've got little kids, you don't want them running and jumping in the puddles a day after the rain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. We're looking forward to working with you.
Me too, thank you.
Reports in minutes. Uh, we have five, uh, different reports. Are there any, uh, questions or comments regarding them? I think we need a motion. Do I have a motion to receive and file the minutes?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mark number three oh seven, do we have a motion to approve subject to full audit?
Motion, so move.
Support.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, uh, we need a, uh, this will require a roll call vote, and, uh, the motion does need to, uh, call for us to reconvene. So could we have a, uh, a motion to recess into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we, uh, move into closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight immediately following the regular city commission meeting to discuss pending litigation and union negotiations, and then reconvene back to our regular meeting after...
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, may I bro-tell?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. One more opportunity for, uh, public participation. Seeing none, I'll move to the city managers.
Wanted to give you a quick update. Uh, Tony did a lot of research, uh, looked for a video camera that was suitable to be anchored to the Public Works Building, uh, the, uh, post office box, uh, in front of the Public Works. And we did identify one, so we will be ordering that shortly, and, uh, it will have the ability to, uh, be video, uh, videotaped so that if an issue does arise, we'll be able to go back and look back to the videotape and see if we can see that. That's it.
Any questions of the city manager?
What's happening with Rackham?
I have not heard back from the city of Detroit. But I'll, I'll ask Collette, you seem to know.
For the record, that has to do with the city of Detroit's, uh, retention of a new man...
manager to run the golf course. And coming of concern because of the fact we're approaching the end of February, and I haven't heard whether they retained anyone or not, despite multiple efforts on my part to establish that connection, which I thought we had, but maybe the phone line is bad.
I did hear today through the Tri-Community Coalition, who's trying to arrange to have their annual event there, as they have for the last few years. And they were told by the Parks and Rec Department today that they were hoping to name the party that they were going to assign it to by the end of the week, but that it would be another month before it was approved by council in the city. So...
Oh, why I never forget.
Any other questions?
On this, Kenzino.
Mr. Zeno, we're done with our public participation.
Okay, but with Rackham, have they paid us the taxes they owes?
Let's move on to commissioners' remarks. Start with the Commissioner Holsman.
I have no comments tonight. Can I give Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. May I approach him or so?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jakes? I'm rolling here.
I'm sorry to say, but I also have no comments.
Well, I'm going to comment for all of us. I do have a couple of comments. I'll make them quick. I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to Thursday evening to attend the new residents' reception. That will be fun. I did attend my first environmental advisory committee meeting as a liaison with a lovely group of people. And I want to tell you that I learned something new. If you want a second recycling bin, you can get a second recycling bin. And after today, I realized my family needs a second recycling bin. So call DPW if you'd like another one. And then with spring around the corner and many residents thinking about gardening, I just wanted to let you know about a fun initiative. One of our residents is kind of beginning to look into, it's Aaron Reddish, and he's looking at the potential for a community garden. And he's working, it's exploratory now, but he's just been working with other residents. I attended a meeting with him to see what the feasibility is, if it's a possible thing, if we could do that. But for many of us, we have a lot of shade in our backyard, and it might be a fun, a fun project for the community. So that's it.
Okay. I would just like to remind everyone that the Men's Club Auction is March nineteenth. As our president, Rob, already mentioned, there's eight hundred and fifty tickets available, of which four hundred and fifty have already been sold. And the catalog hasn't hit the street yet, but it will in another week. So get yourself to the recreation center and get your ticket, because it's the best party of the year. Having said that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. It will reconvene in about five minutes. Call the...
Drinks in the night.
I'll call the regular city commission of February twenty-third back to order. We have a motion. Move to approve the Sempliner Agreement?
Second.
Consent judgment?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is it called a...
Consent judgment.
And I assume you're authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute on behalf of the city?
So execute it.
I agree to that.
Motion to execute. All right. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries. Second item.
I need a motion and support to ratify the terms of agreement with the county officers.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? Mr. Mayor, two things very quick. One, I publicly commend our city manager for her excellent job negotiating on behalf of the city. And second, I would say that this agreement will go a long way to address the pension shortfall that we're currently facing by doing some things that will help shore that up long-term. And so I think we're moving in the right direction.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the command officers as well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Next one.
You're not taking a motion on that, sir?
Aye.